I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board order. It is the sixteenth of December, seven o'clock. The Chair, Wendell Jones, is not here, so I will. My name is Joe Ivers. I will be Chair in his place. Please excuse the delay. Devices and I don't work well together. Could you all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have an agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any questions about the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next order of business is pay the bills. Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion about the bills? All those in favor of paying the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial summary report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have financial summary report. Superintendent's recommendations and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. First item under Superintendent's reports this evening is the VSBA funding resolution concerning public education funding in Virginia. This resolution is presented by the School Board Association of Virginia, asking school boards to consider adopting the resolution. The resolution is a joint effort between VSBA, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, and expresses the need for the state to appropriately fund public education. The resolution was first provided to the Board on December 2nd and is brought back this evening for your discussion and potential action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. School start time and presentation. The School Board has designated this date as the public forum for school start times. Each speaker is allotted two minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when the two minutes are passed. We'll begin the forum with the first speaker. School start and times presentation first. Thank you. Let's get right over that.
Good evening. Dr. Lois Graham has been facilitator for the School Start Times Committee, and she will introduce the folks from School Start Times Committee who are with us this evening, and also those who will make the presentation to you this evening. It's a very brief informational presentation, so that everyone in the room can have some baseline data. Lois?
Good evening, Board members, Ms. Blackburn and community members. Our School Start Time Committee appreciates the opportunity to briefly share our progress with you and with the community. We also want to recognize and thank the community members for participating in this process by completing surveys, and a special thanks goes to those who are here tonight. Three committee members will present tonight. The first is Lieutenant Bowyer from Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, followed by Sean Bissell, a senior at Blacksburg High School, and Chris Jordan, who is the father of three children in our school system. Lieutenant Bowyer?
The committee began with the why. MCPS is considering a change in the school start times because of research suggesting academic and health benefits for students. Due to this, the School Board passed a resolution on October the seventh to study school start times and directed that a committee be convened. The committee is structured to represent all areas of the county and a cross-section of the stakeholders. And at this time, I would like to ask those that are on the committee and are present tonight to please stand. Thank you. Summaries and information from all of our meetings are available on the MCPS website, and we encourage everyone to visit the website and take a look at the information. Some considerations that the committee took into account were student achievement, safety, cost, the state required length of the academic day, participation in extracurricular activities, including athletics, clubs, and after-job work assignments that the students may have, and of course, the community. And at this time, Sean will discuss our project to this point. Thank you.
So far, the committee has met three times. In these meetings, the committee has discussed advantages and challenges that schedule change might entail extensively. We have reviewed extensive research from schools that implemented changes and professional organizations such as the National Institute of Health. The committee then developed surveys for stakeholders. Looking at schedules, we developed possible options for the community to consider. Our next steps will be to review the feedback from the surveys, tonight's forum, and other sources. And then in January, the committee will provide a recommendation to the superintendent. We will now present some schedules for consideration. We reviewed several schedules and determined these were the most feasible for consideration. The first, of course, is our current schedule, in which elementary schools begin at nine o'clock and secondary schools begin at seven forty or seven fifty. Plan A is a flipped schedule. In this plan, elementary schools would switch to the seven forty start time. Plan B is also a flipped schedule, but elementary schools would not begin until seven fifty. This schedule allows buses to start picking up elementary students later at six fifty rather than six thirty. The cost incurred would be approximately fifty thousand dollars for either of these plans. Some challenges we were aware of and considered extensively were family considerations, bus pickup times, extracurricular activities, work schedules, and cost. Chris will now talk about the research that went into our discussions.
Extensive research shows that teens need about nine hours of sleep, but the hormones that regulate sleep in teenagers make it difficult for them to fall asleep before eleven PM or be alert before eight AM. Further studies have found that later school start times result in teens getting more sleep on school nights. Research on later start times reveals numerous benefits for teens, including improved student achievement, better physical and mental health, and improved behavior. Studies examining delayed school start times consistently found improved academic performance, with some finding the most dramatic gains for disadvantaged students. Other studies found improvements in student physical and mental health, with effects ranging from a reduction in daytime sleepiness and inattention to a lower incidence of depression and a reduction in risky behaviors like substance abuse. Later school start times also improve behavior, with a decrease in behavior problems, indiscipline referrals, absenteeism, tardiness, and dropout rates. Research has also shown that later start times result in fewer car crashes among teens. In short, later start times were found to positively affect all aspects of teen students' lives. Unfortunately, the research on elementary start times is limited. The theory suggests elementary students should not be adversely affected. Please visit the school's website for further reading. There's a great deal more research available on the Montgomery County Public Schools website.
Could you repeat that last statement you said about-
Certainly.
Elementary schools?
Elementary school students. The research on earlier elementary start times is very limited. The theory suggests that elementary students should not be adversely affected. There's more information about that on the school's website. I could go into it, but I want to keep this brief to have the opportunity to listen to We encourage your input as we continue this process. We have received over seven thousand survey responses already, and feedback forums are available tonight. If you complete a forum tonight, please leave it on the table at the back of the room. The next steps for the committee will be to review the feedback from the surveys and this public forum. The committee will then give a recommendation to the superintendent. Thank you.
Would like to thank the committee again, all of you who are present, for your work. I know it's been above and beyond, and I appreciate the diligence that you have used in approaching the task. Thank you.
As I stated before, we'll have the speakers now. Each speaker will be designated two minutes, and the screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining, when the two minutes, and when the two minutes have passed. And the first speaker is Lori Rup. Please state your name and your address when you come up to speak.
Good evening. My name's Lori Rup. My address is, do you want the full address or just Christiansburg?
Full address.
Five zero six Switchback Road in Christiansburg. I'm a single mom of a seven and eight-year-old. They attend Bellevue Elementary School. Before I begin, I would like to thank each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I would also like to express that what I'm about to say is my opinion. I want all of us to respect each other's opinions tonight regardless if we're for or against this. First off, I've read the study on the website, and after completing the survey, I feel that the times for the schools should remain the same. Some parents rely, and the reasons why, some parents rely on high school students to watch elementary-aged children in the afternoon. Some of us cannot afford school-supported after-school care, and our elementary school children are not safe to be at home by themselves. Secondly, safety. Some of us live in the county, where we don't have streetlights to illuminate bus stops. With that being said, have you been around the county to look at the bus stops? And how do you propose we illuminate those if this is going to go forward? Also, speaking of safety, what about the winter weather? Sometimes decisions are not made until last minute. Are we going to take those into consideration if this is approved for our children? Because they're younger. Not saying that the high school students and middle schoolers are any different, but they're a little bit younger. My children participate in an extracurricular activities through the Christiansburg Rec. Center this past fall. Anybody who has a young child who knows football, it can start between seven and seven thirty, some of their latest games, whether it's home or away. And by way, Pulaski County is one of those areas that they play at. Sometimes we didn't get home until nine or nine fifteen. By the time they had a snack, even after they've had dinner, they had a snack, shower, brush your teeth, do their nightly routine, it was ten PM before my child got in bed. Also, how do you propose our children get up early the next morning if you approve this? The National Sleep Foundation states that children between the ages of five and twelve should get ten to eleven hours of sleep each night. And I know my time's up, so sorry. But I could go on if you want me to.
No, your time is up. Where's the-
Excuse me. Next speaker is this, Maren Rieger?
Rieger.
Rieger.
Yep.
I'm waiting for you to start talking before I-
Oh, you're great. Thanks for that. Okay. My name is Maren Rieger. I am seventeen hundred Masada Way in Blacksburg. I'm the mother of two children at Harding Avenue. But more relevant to my remarks this evening, I am the Childcare Coordinator for Virginia Tech University. I was hired to assess the needs, the conditions, and situations of Virginia Tech families all over the New River Valley related to childcare, and to develop near- and long-term solutions. To add to this discussion tonight, I'd like to present three key issues, and I will talk as fast as I can, that have not sufficiently been studied by the Board or the committee as they develop this proposal. These issues are cost, transportation, and staffing. For cost, what we know is that as a snapshot of the needs in our area, forty-one percent of students at Harding receive free or reduced meals. What we don't know is what percentage of those families are utilizing after-school care and at what cost, likely a large percentage. If the time they need increases from two to three hours daily, the potential cost increases fifty percent per child. Can they afford that? What are their alternatives? Will we see a sharp uptick in the number of latchkey children in our areas, since siblings are no longer home to provide that care? Transportation. Even if we could solve the financial problems inherent in the situation, and if capacity existed in childcare centers, transportation is an insurmountable obstacle at this moment. I've spoken to the directors of many childcare centers in the area, including Kristy Snyder at Rainbow Riders. There is a zero-capacity increase available to transport any students from schools to her facilities at this time. Further, I discovered that nobody that I spoke to had ever been approached by any member of a committee in relation to this discussion to discuss after-school care. I sit on a board, finally, to talk about the staff issue, of people representing the Virginia Tech Foundation, Tech, New River Community College, and many other businesses. One huge issue is staffing. If you could solve the financial problem and the transportation issue, it is impossible to accommodate the spike and the increase of students that would be a demand placed on these childcare centers with staff. There is not a pool of qualified and trained professional staff available in this area. And that is one of the major obstacles in childcare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Matt Hicks.
My name is Matt Hicks, six oh seven South Franklin Street. Very simple, just state a couple of questions. It looks like the whole thing is proteins. Looks like all the research is towards that. I'm pro elementary because I have four kids and falling branch. Elementary, I can't even keep up with what we're doing already, let alone bump us up an extra hour. So I'm family-specific, I guess, when it comes to this. It's going to kill us. Our kids are going to forget riding the bus because this is not feasible. It's not possible. They may ride at home, but they're not going to catch it in the morning, period. Sleep. If the studies are inconclusive, why do we not have a comparison study for the elementary age? Everything we've heard is proteins. That's great. I agree with them. Get them more sleep, but get them to bed earlier. Don't change school times for the little guys. Average, just off the top of my head, teenagers most likely are going to stay up later or work later if they can sleep in. Now, when I was in high school, I left probably eleven o'clock in tenth grade, went to work, left at twelve, you know, eight or nine o'clock or whatever. Work-study, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. I had one class in senior year. What do they need to go to school earlier for? I don't know. You got me. The biggest thing is every pediatrician will tell you, it's when you go to the doctor, which we go a lot, having four kids, ten hours or minimum. How are we supposed to get ten hours of sleep and get them on the bus at six thirty in the morning when they're getting home at four o'clock or whatever? So I just see it as preposterous, and thank you for your time.
Print out a copy of all those, just so you guys have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Joanna Hicks.
I'm Johanna Hicks, six oh seven South Franklin Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. This is from an email I got from Brenda Blake from MCPS. Theory and research indicate that starting in school later will be beneficial for the academic achievement and health of teenagers, while the same theory suggests that elementary students should not be adversely affected by any earlier start time. Under this paragraph, it states that there has been research done for teenagers. Where is all your research on younger children, or is this just a theory? Where is family time? If the younger students have to go to school so early, they have to go to bed very early because they need ten to eleven hours of sleep, parents may not get home from work until very near or after bedtime. This is a big safety issue for our kids. If elementary students have the earliest start times, they may be waiting for the bus in the dark early mornings or waiting at home alone after their school. Research is lacking on the effect of school start times on younger students, so it is hard to justify their earlier start. Transportation. Problems can arise, including the cost. Forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars? From where is this money coming from? Mostly in this bad economy. Stress for families. This change will affect the entire community, from students and parents to businesses, libraries, police, youth, sports clubs, bus drivers, and many others. Sleep is very important for everybody, not just for the teenager students. These are papers. I just had a little bit of time at home tonight, just looking at things, kids being killed because cars cannot see them during the night, well, you know, during the early times in the morning time. I don't want my children to be on this list. Don't make them be on this list. Don't make our children suffer because of your decisions.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ian Herring.
Ian Herring, two zero four Craig Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. I have children, both elementary and middle school, and I'd like to thank the Board for considering this issue and bringing it forward. I'd also like to thank the committee for all their work they've done, and I applaud the Board for gathering information from a variety of constituent students included. I hope at the end of the day that the decision that's made is based upon the prevailing evidence of the benefit of delayed start times for middle and high school students. As to the sleep differences between young children and adolescents, there's a reason adolescents have been studied in this regard, and I urge people to look into that. I've spent a lot of time studying many of the reports that have been generated, and while no study is perfect, the evidence of delayed start times being beneficial has reached an actionable point in my view. The Board knows better than anybody what budget cuts have done to K through twelve funding over the past several years, with the estimates ranging anywhere from twelve to twenty-one percent between two thousand and seven and this year. Yet you're asked to do more and more with less and less, largely with regard to academic standards. And here we have a solution for our middle and high school students that show there's clear benefit to the academic performance, not to mention the health issues. I don't need to reiterate those because we all know what we're talking about. So, you know, what we're seeing is cuts to teachers, increased class size, all to the detriment of academics, and this is a potential benefit. And local school districts clearly have a very limited ability to respond to this. This is a relatively low-cost potential approach. I acknowledge there are going to be costs, there's impacts on everybody, myself included, after-school care, et cetera. We all know what they are, but I would urge everybody to consider that the costs to us as individuals in addressing these issues are short-term, or that the potential benefits we're talking about for our children are lifelong from the standpoint of academic performance, health, et cetera.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Carter.
My name's Lisa Carter, and I live at three sixty-five Windsor Drive in Christiansburg. And I'm going to have a son in kindergarten next year. And I'm here tonight to speak to represent my own voice and the voice of a lot of working families in this community who really oppose sending our elementary students to school before eight o'clock in the morning. There's not adequate research to show that this change will not affect our younger students. As it's been mentioned, it's mostly been focused on older kids. The article from the American Psychological Association that's on the website, the findings of that study actually suggested that delaying middle and high school start times at the expense of making elementary school go earlier may simply be shifting the problem from adolescents to younger children. The University of Minnesota study actually stated that the start time of eight forty seemed to capture the elementary student's prime learning time, and moving to a seven forty start was associated with increased absences and tardiness. In addition to the forty-eight thousand dollar cost that is projected for the bus wages, has anyone considered the cost of advertising the change, communicating it to families? A lot of people don't even realize that this is happening, potentially, starting next year. There's a lot of families of people have mentioned that rely on the older kids to watch the younger kids in the afternoon. The adventure club already costs almost double for afternoon care that it does in the morning. It's sixty dollars in the afternoon for a week versus thirty-six in the morning. And, I mean, people are going to probably have to pay even more because they're going to have to increase the rate to watch the kids an extra hour. I don't know anyone that gets off work at two-ten and can pick their kids up then. A lot of people work seven-to-three type shifts in this community. I don't even know if the adventure club could accommodate the number of kids that they might have to have because there's nowhere else for them to go. Please consider the working families in this county and the hardship that it would create, and please also consider the sleep needs of our younger kids. In a county with the forty-one percent free and reduced lunch rate, the incomes of working high schoolers are important, and their after-school activities are important to them, too.
Thank you. Suzanne Ducker.
My name is Suzanne Ducker. I live at thirteen twelve Oak Drive in Blacksburg with my husband and two teenage boys who are presently in grades ten and twelve. I would like to thank the superintendent and the Board for entertaining the idea of switching school times for our children. It is always easier to do the status quo, and I applaud your efforts in striving to find the best learning environment for all of our children. I found it interesting, when I was looking at the research presented on your website, that it directly corresponds to what I found as a mother of two sons. As younger children, they are up at the crack of dawn and ready to go. Our biggest discussion in the morning was whether or not they should be allowed to watch TV prior to going to school. That early morning energy was exhausted by the time they returned home from school at three thirty. In contrast, those same two boys went through a dramatic change in middle school. They no longer woke up early and could easily sleep until nine PM on the weekends. This change continued until now, they could easily sleep until eleven or twelve or later, if allowed, on the weekends. Waking up at six AM is torture for these kids. They go to school tired, and they return home even more tired. They both play tennis after school, and they get a second wind later on in the evening. This is when they like to do their homework. They find it extremely difficult to go to bed prior to eleven PM. When their alarm goes off at seven hours later, they start the day tired. One extra hour of sleep in the morning would be fantastic for them. If they didn't have midterms this week, they and their friends would be here begging, begging you to change the time. A couple of months ago, rumor went around that it was definitely going to change, and you would have thought it was Christmas, they were so excited. I know that some of the coaches have expressed concern about a later starting time and its effect on their training. But isn't school first and foremost about teaching our children to read, to write, to learn history, and to be proficient at math? Many of the surrounding school districts already have a later start time. We need to wait for them before we start our matches.
Your time is up.
If they're making it work, I'd like to see us, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Heather Cox.
My name is Heather Cox, and I live at one zero zero six Morning Dove Drive in Blacksburg. Thank you for the time to speak with you tonight. I have this great speech prepared, and I'll probably send it to you via email, but essentially, what I really want to say is, what's the rush? It sounds like this is happening really fast to me. When I look at this, this is a community-impact policy change that will impact small businesses, all businesses, employees, families, kids. If you're affiliated with the school or you're not, you are in some way if you live in this county. And so, we have a community that's got a group of thirty-one individuals together to study this, and there's a lot of great evidence in support of this for our older kids. But the question is, how are we going to adjust for our younger kids? If you make this change because it's the right thing to do for our older kids, how are we going to adjust? I know people right now are planning their budgets for this upcoming year. They don't have a clue how much daycare is going to cost them if they need it. They don't even know who they're going to call for daycare because Rainbow Riders, Adventure Club, they don't even have a plan yet. So they're going to find out in March that they need to potentially be hiring people to start in August? I think that this process is way too fast, and I don't understand what the rush is. I agree that the status quo- 我同意 status quo 不总是好的， 但我们作为一个社区， 应该负责这个过程。所以， 大概三个月， 更多， 研究它。作为委员会， 在 October 上做一份建议， 在 November 上投票， 2016 学年。请我们的 childcare providers， 我们的雇主， 我们的家人， 计划一下。因为这是一个巨大的交易， 我们不应该急躁。我很 frustration， 因为委员会说学校对 elementary 学生的影响很少， 因为 Dr. Peggy Keller 发表了一个这个夏天的文章， 我给她发邮件询问更多信息。她说她没有从 Montgomery County 听到任何消息。这怎么可能？ 我们只是用 available 的信息吗？
你的时间到了。
我没有时间， 谢谢。
谢谢。下一位是 John Black。
你好，我是 John Black， 我在布莱克斯特生活。我认为 研究已经完成， 有一点 incomplete。我们在讨论但是并没有太多证据证明这一点。在网站上发布 recommended sleep 数字很快地发布 adolescent 的 recommended sleep， 对于 elementary 学生， 一个是 easy fix。找到一个 applicable comparison group of districts， 如果很多州的 districts 已经做出了改变， 我希望委员会或 superintendent 会联系那些学校 districts， 问他们改变后的效果， 知道改变对他们的 elementary school test scores 的影响， 如果我们没有 other information on that。我也会注意， 很多研究来自 Fairfax County， Fairfax County 集合了很多研究， 但他们也把 elementary school start times 所以， 对于研究委员会， 我会考虑以及对 earlier start times 的担忧， 有 several ideas 都被呈现， 如果它们是 feasible， 但只有其中一个选项， 那就 true， 对于学校 board， 作出决定， 研究委员会应该注重哪些方面， 以及应该给你反馈些什么， 为你的决定， 谢谢。
谢谢。下一位是 Annika Nathan。之后是 Frank Hubbard。
下午好，我的名字是 Frank Hubbard， 我在 2595 普林堡路， 那里生活。我是两个中年学生， 以及两个初中学生。现在， 这让我很担心， 研究仅针对 preteen 和 teenage 孩子。现在， 国际睡眠基金会说中年学生需要 10到11 个小时的睡眠， 在足球比赛中玩游戏， 或者参与课外活动， 以及中学学生。它推迟了高中的学生 能够开始练习， 让他们晚点回家， 这也让他们不能改变。现在， 研究表明， 第三班学生， 第三班学生阅读水平 就是下午一点到四点之间， 如果我们推迟时间， 我们把他们的时间浪费了， 不给他们孩子学习他们需要的核心教育， 在高中取得成功， 给他们机会取得成功。你知道， 我的中年学生每天晚上九点睡觉， 这是 non-negotiable， 然后他们回家睡觉。明天早上， 我们从门外出去， 我们每一个人， 不管怎样， 因为 childcare 问题， 它不会让孩子们睡得更久， 以推迟学校时间。它只会创造 childcare 问题， 财政负担， 在县里， 并影响我们的孩子， 并不让他们成为成功的人。谢谢。
谢谢。下一位是 Mark Chabaka。
晚上好，我是 Mark Chabaka， 克朗林街 817 号， 布莱克斯特。我想感谢董事会对这个话题的研究。从我了解的， 我认为 status quo 不够好， 我们需要做点什么。所以， 在一般情况下， 说到这一点， 我有三个担忧， 一种是关于 elementary 学生的影响， 这个话题广泛地讨论。我想补充， 当我查看你的网站 和委员会给出的例子时， 我发现很多学校 districts 已经推迟了 就是推迟了开始时间， 无论是 elementary 还是 secondary。我看到了很多 districts 有延迟的开始时间。我没有看到太多的开始时间， 我认为可能有一个 elementary 开始时间 这就引出第二个担忧， 就是调查和选项。我认为调查是 incomplete， 我不指责委员会， 我认为他们处于一些限制。但我想知道我们能不能花点时间可能推迟两个 schedule， 即使是 20或30 分钟。我知道有一些担忧， 但我认为这是有价值 你知道， 我妻子提出了一个想法， 我不知道我们每天花多少时间， 但我知道我们花时间。可能我们应该花时间， 使得学校日稍微缩短一点， 以帮助开始时间。第三个担忧是社区支持。如 Ms. Cox 说， 并让更多的 parents 和 PTAs 参与， 但我希望你们在某个时候采取行动。谢谢。
谢谢。下一位是 Sunshine Lamers。对不起。
没事。你好，我是 Sunshine Lamers， 我在 5485 贝尔顿路， 我想感谢董事会， 上级主任， 以及委员会对这个区域的努力， 因为我认为 evidence 是存在的， 早期学校时间将有利于我们的学生。除此之外， 我不相信解决方案是把问题转移到 elementary age 学生。这不是我的想法中 acceptable 的解决方案。虽然我对 limited data 或研究对于 elementary age 学生有限制， 我觉得我们知道很多， 让我们谈谈我们知道的。如果我们看 Plan A 或 Plan B， the elementary age children 会晚上上学， 在黑暗中等着公交车， 或在黑暗中走路， 在学校学期的八个半月。对不起。我们也知道二分之一的 elementary age 学生晚上会睡到九点。我们知道他们的平均 wake up time 改成 proposed time， 那平均来说， 我们的 students 会每天睡九个小时。这比 10到11 个小时推荐的要少。我们也知道 当你短时间， 当你失去一个小时睡眠， 在这个 age 群， 不是 older kids， 在这个 age 群， 让我读给你们看。在数学上， 在睡眠上， 在情绪分数上， 这些都 documented。如果你增加他们的睡眠时间到 27 分钟， 你会看到这些方面有所改善。所以， 我想提供这些参考， 最后， 我想说， 我支持这些改变， 对于中年和中学学生。对于 elementary school 学生改成比 proposed 的更早。谢谢。
谢谢。最后一位， 已经注册了的是 Connie Froggett。
谢谢，我的名字是 Connie Froggett， 我在 1751 沙丘山公路。